Good evening, everybody. At this time, please silence your cell phone and be advised these proceedings are being recorded. For those physically present in the council chambers who desire to address the city council, during the meeting, please complete the request to speak form available at the front entrance of the council chamber and present it to the city clerk. Speakers physically present will be called upon at appropriate time, and each person will be allowed three minutes of speaking time. Go ahead and call this meeting to order Tuesday, August 26 at 6:00 p.m. Councilor Allen, would you like to say?
Sure. Tonight, we'll be closing this meeting in honor of a Grand Terrace resident who passed away in July 13, Shirley Humphers. Lived in Grand Terrace for 52 years. She loved calling Grand Terrace her home. She's survived by her family, her husband, Mike, and she will be missed. So we will be closing in honor of Shirley Humphers. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Allen. Our prayers are with the family and their time of comfort. It's not always easy losing someone, no matter how long they've been here. But, you know, longtime Grand Terrace resident, every resident here is, you know, no matter if you've been here for two days, we honor every resident here. So just prayers for the family. So invocation will be given by Chaplain Tim Evans at the Unforgettable Foundation. Then right after that, we're going to have a presentation of the flag, and then the Boy Scouts be lead us in the pledge allegiance. So Chaplain Tim Evans, please stand.
Dear God, it is always an honor to invoke your presence and to welcome you to this room. We thank you that America does business like this, and in this community of Grand Terrace that there are many who really are committed to a better world. I thank you for those who protect and serve, for those who train, for those who heal, for those who do so many of the different important roles in this community. Please bless the council tonight, the leadership in this community. As business is done, may wisdom and honor take place, and may your angels come close to bless all in attendance. And I thank you that we all welcome and honor you from multiple religions and backgrounds. And I close this prayer as a Christian in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Color guard attention. Color guard, advance. Color guard, prepare to post your colors. Color guard, post your colors. Please join me in the flag salute. If you are in uniform, please salute. If you are out of uniform, please rise your hand wherever you are. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, young men, for posting the colors and doing the pledge allegiance. Councilor Allen.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor, for letting me jump in here real quick. And I just want to say that tonight is really special, having the Boy Scouts do that for us. And we are also really blessed by having Tim Evans offer our opening prayer. Tim Evans is a very special person in our community. You know, he started the Unforgettable Foundation years and years and years ago. And I'd like to congratulate him on his recent retirement from that very successful foundation. And we know he left in good hands, and it's going strong. So if you'd like to support those kind of things, there's your man. Thanks, Tim.
Thank you, Councilor Allen. So Madam City Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Allen?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
I am here.
Mayor Pro Tem Sabino?
Here.
Mayor Hussey?
Here.
Mayor, you have a corner.
Thank you.
Item A, do we have any reordering additions?
Yeah, we're going to be complicated tonight.
Oh, great.
We need to pull item number six, please, and move item nine to after item 12.
Item nine to where?
After 12. That's the most I could do at once.
Okay, just don't want to overwork you. All right, public comment. This is an opportunity for the members of the public to comment on any item not appearing on the regular agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the city council may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda. They may briefly respond to statements made or ask questions for clarification. The mayor may also request a brief response from staff to questions raised during the public comment, or may request that the matter be agendized for future meetings. Madam City Clerk, do we have any?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, city staff, and residents. My name is Matthew Hernandez, and I am the event chairman for the Relay for Life Colton Grand Terrace Cancer Walk that is held each year in the city of Colton at Colton High School Football Stadium. This year, I'm excited to announce that we are celebrating our 20th anniversary that Relay has been in the city of Colton. 20 years ago, Relay started with 10 teams and about 50 participants walking the baseball field at Chavez Park. Before COVID in 2020, our Relay had grown to 70 teams and about 8,000 participants. Since 2020, our Relay has been in rebuilding mode. This year, we currently have 37 teams signed up, plus about 15 outside vendors. We are expecting about 1,000 to 1,500 participants. Within the 20 years, our Relay has raised $1.24 million, and those funds go towards research, provides rides for patients to and from treatments, provides lodging for patients and their caregivers near treatment centers, all free of charge. There are many families that have been touched by cancer, mine included. In 2021, my mom passed away from leukemia, her third fight with cancer. So I do this in memory of my mom. One thing that Relay does, bring the communities together to fight this disease. The continuation of this vital work is possible with your help, making a real difference in the lives of neighbors. Together, a future free from cancer can be created. It is an opportunity for residents to come and honor loved ones and see that they are not alone. I have presented mayor and city council with an invitation and a small gift, and thank you for your continued support and dedication that you have all given to us and for being part of the fight against cancer. We greatly appreciate you all. Our Relay event will take place next month, Saturday, September 27. Our event is 13 hours, kicking off with our opening ceremony at 9:00 a.m., followed by our first lap dedication to our survivors and their caregivers. The day is filled with games, raffles, food, music, short ceremonies, and most of all, individuals walking the track every minute of every hour, as cancer never stops, and neither do we. At this time, I would like to formally invite you all to not only come out to our event throughout the day, but to join us as we, at our opening ceremony, activities kicking off 20 years Relaying. Our Relay committee has been planning this event all year long and is committed to a smooth event, and is excited to see that it is finally right around the corner. Support can make this year's Relay for Life the most impacted yet. Working together can help save lives. Thank you for this opportunity to speak and the relationship that we have established between our Relay staff and the city of Grand Terrace. I look forward to seeing all of you on Saturday, September 27 at Colton High School Football Stadium. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Matt, hold on a minute. Councilor Allen, are you still putting a team together?
You bet. We've got a growing team, but we have lots of room for more team members.
Okay, so when people donate for this, they donate for how many times you're going to walk around the track, or they just deal one-time donation, or how does this work?
So they can make it just a one-time donation, and then if the members that have joined Councilmember Allen's team, Councilmember Allen being the team captain of that team would generate a list of times, maybe like every 30 minutes, and then the members on his team would pick a time slot, and they would come out at that time and walk during that 30 minutes, you know, around the field. We have, you know, 35, 37 plus 15 vendors that are lined up around the field that are doing, you know, raffle items, selling raffle tickets for baskets, TVs, bikes. They're selling little antique things, all kinds of different things that they're going to be selling. And so another way of supporting the Relay is stopping at those booths and maybe purchasing raffle tickets or an item that you see that you would like to have.
So has anybody ever walked the 13 hours by themselves, straight?
Back, a few years back, there was one gentleman that walked the whole time. And that was, back then, before COVID, it was 24 hours. And so he was out there for 24 hours.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. Mayor, to answer more specifically your question, there's these flyers up here on the thing, and there's a little QR code on them right down here. And if you scan this QR code, it offers you choices in your ways you want to support. You can become an active team member. You could become just someone, you could, someone who makes a one-time donation or multiple donations. And businesses in our community, God bless them, have, some of them have stepped up with services that they're offering to raffle off, and so others have stepped up with gift baskets, or coupons, or, you know, or some of the products that they sell. So, yeah, thanks to, thank them for their early efforts on, and we're just going to continue to do this fundraising effort until September 27, when it all pays off. I'd love to have you on the team.
I told you I'd sign up.
Yeah, we have a business, a business here in Grand Terrace that is not able to attend that day. So they donated juice, juices for our survivor tent for their continental breakfast, juice and water. They donated.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for the information.
No problem. Thank you.
Thanks, Matthew.
Ken Henderson?
Councilman, Ken Henderson? I almost said Councilmember Henderson. What are you doing sitting out there? We have an extra chair here. You pick a side, either by Conrad or by Matt.
Good evening, Mayor, council, community. My name is Ken Henderson. I reside at 23,000 Finch Street here in Grand Terrace. My wife and I are 41-year residents of Grand Terrace, 15 years at Cape Terrace Homes, and the remaining years at our current residence of 23,000. It's right at the base of Blue Mountain. And I mention that because what I wanted to speak to the council about tonight is the flyovers from San Bernardino International Airport that have really affected the quiet enjoyment of our property. Now, we may be spoiled a little bit because we lived at Cape Terrace Homes, and it was quiet, obviously, inside the gates. And we live at Finch Street in the cul-de-sac, and so most of the traffic is obviously homeownership. And it's a beautiful community. We've been there since 1989. And what we're facing now today, throughout the day and throughout the night, these flyovers from these jet airplanes gaining power and altitude as they pass over Blue Mountain. It's as though they use Blue Mountain as a navigation point. And so what we would like to have occur is the council formally agendize this matter because we intend to approach the airport authority, and we'd like to have the council's support and a recommendation to assist our working relationship with San Bernardino International Airport Authority. One of the authority members, or two of the authority members are on the San Bernardino City Council, but I was unsuccessful in making contact with them on this issue before approaching the city council. As a matter of protocol, I thought it would be better for us to come to the council first and then approached the airport authority members that sit on the San Bernardino City There are flights that occur where it gives you the impression that they're landing the plane on top of your home. It's that loud, and it seems like it's that close. 2:00 in the morning, 3:00 in the morning, 4:00 in the morning. You're going to hear more particulars from my neighbor who's sitting next to me, and he'll address the council on the same issue, but he has some anecdotal and factual information regarding this topic that I think we all can benefit from. Thank you for your time and attention.
Justin Rufford?
Hopped up there that fast, didn't I? Thank you for allowing me to have the mic here for a minute. My name is Justin Rufford. I live at 22985 Finch Street. Lived there since December of 2020. Love this community. I come from a small community in Northern California, and when we were looking for a place to relocate here in Southern California, as we got to know some of the folks visiting around here, we really fell in love with this area. One thing about Finch Street, as Ken had mentioned, is it's just a very quiet, quaint neighborhood. Neighbors all know each other. It's very nice to be there. In 2020, when we bought that house, there was literally none or very little air traffic that came over the house. You noticed maybe flights going in and out of Ontario, but never a south, a north-south pattern over our house. Today, I would tell you that I recorded, and I say today, yesterday, or yesterday, Sunday, I recorded three flights over the house within a matter of 15 minutes interval. And the height over the house seems to be relatively low, couple thousand feet is what it feels like. Doing some anecdotal research and just trying to understand what's changed over the course of the last few years, a lot of emphasis on expanding cargo out of San Bernardino Airport, including adding third-party to Amazon's offering for moving not only their own freight, but moving third-party freight. So I think that may have also increased the amount of traffic coming out of there. The other thing is, there's a site out there, or a community out there that's called SBD Good Neighbors. And when you look at their site, it's a site that's meant to give the community a sense of what has been agreed upon with the airport and with the community about flight patterns. And so if you take note of the flight pattern that's coming out of San Bernardino Airport to go south, they should really fly about five to eight miles east of here to go south, and instead, they're flying way out and around Blue Mountain. Their most direct route is what it looks like from their website, should be almost due south off of the 210 going up through Highland, so to go to San Diego or wherever they're going south. So I think maybe addressing that with the airport authority would be beneficial to maybe get them back on track. Thank you.
No more public comment.
Okay, you know, prior to this public comment, there's a statement here to request that the matter be agendized for a future meeting. Is that right, City Attorney?
Yes, you could do it now, or you could do it during the future agenda item later in the agenda.
Does the council want to do the recommendation from the public to agendize this item so we can look deeper into it and be with the airport authority?
Mayor. I fully support their efforts, and I've long time supported because I've noticed this increase in traffic and lowering of their, of the altitude of their flight patterns getting, it seems. And so whatever effort that we can do to mitigate that, to find out more, I fully support. And I'm ready to have it on the agenda. If you want to do it now, that's fine. I support it.
Councilman Wilson?
I second that item. Actually, in the walks that I've done, it appears as if, they start at about 9:40 at night and go on from there, it appears as if they're USPS carriers, and it definitely looks like they're winding around, doing a U-turn basically from the airport over to San Diego, which would make sense for that kind of operation. So the increase in sound and the increase in disruption is exponential. You know, I've been here for 46 years, and it's never been like that. And I don't know who at the airport made this nifty decision to change the traffic pattern, but they needed back away from it, so I'd be glad to add my support.
Now, Michelle, you guys have anything? Yeah? No? So we have a motion and a second. Yeah, because San Bernardino, we always get the rave noise, now we're having the airport noise. Maybe we should send the donkeys over there. Okay, so we have a motion and a second for a future agenda item for the structure, for the air traffic noise, and... City Attorney, you have anything to add to that? All right, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, there's no more public comment?
No, sir.
All right, we'll go ahead and close that. Special presentation, Boy Scouts of America Troop 40. They already did their presentation. But Scout Leader, do you have anything you want to say tonight?
Putting your...
I'm going to put you in a spot. Also, are you going to repeat with the pie in the face or the whipped cream tonight?
That was a private thing. I don't think that was for the city to see as a whole.
Oh, okay.
Getting pied in the face.
I know you'll make a fundraiser in Grand Terrace, and they did that to me, so...
I think we've already got it planned. Yeah, we'll definitely put that in. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the city council for having us again tonight. Thank you for letting our boys do the flag ceremony. We appreciate the opportunity to do that in front of the city and the council. Here to once again say thank you to the city council for the grant that was offered to our scouts for summer camp. They had an amazing time. I think I relayed last time about a lot of the activities that they were doing. In addition to just the fun experience of being there, they also earned a couple of awards for Honor Troop and Honor Patrol. Those activities that they have to, requirements that they have to complete for those involve camp service, doing pledge of allegiance, doing camp prayer at mealtime, really participating in camp activities versus just the average going to your merit badge classes and going swimming and all that fun stuff. So they definitely were highly regarded in camp. There were several of the camp commissioners that spoke with our leaders and praised our boys and the boys of Grand Terrace for the work that they did up there and the model scouts that they were. So thank you guys very much for giving us that opportunity for our boys to just kind of show off Grand Terrace to a bunch of people from Long Beach. So that was nice.
There you go. Did they do a tug-of-war against Long Beach? Did you guys do it? Did they do a tug-of-war?
Yeah.
Come on up, Joe.
I'd like to welcome Joe Kennedy, who is probably the most outspoken one of our scouts. He likes to talk the most. So I'll let him give you guys some background.
Yeah, so as Scout Master David was saying, we, one of the activities we had to do to get the Honor Troop Award was called the Water Carnival. And some of these activities included a tug-of-war in the canoes. So we would get three to four boys in each canoe, and we had a rope tied to both canoes, and we had to pull and pull and pull. And then some of the other activities for the Water Carnival were a relay, not relay, but it was a race across the pool. So we got in the canoes, we had to paddle with our hands, no paddles or oars or anything. And we also had some competitions for the Water Carnival, such as best belly flop, highest splash, and a bunch of other fun activities.
No alligator wrestling contest or anything like that?
No, actually. I think you might want to go to Australia for one of those.
All right, well, you know, we got the card and the picture, so thank you for giving it to the city. So this is from the boys at the camp, and what they have. So one other question, that five-and-dime shot?
Yes.
You know, I'm instructor too, so what was the yardage on that?
Did you have 25 yards, 50 yards? 50? Yeah, 50 yards with a 22 iron sights.
Well, there you go, Tanner Fries. You got your, we'll put him on Citizens Patrol? Okay. Good job. Well, thank you.
And a couple of our boys also did archery and were top shots at the archery course. They earned their qualification score before the rest of the boys in camp, so they were the first ones to get done with archery. So we've got some dead eyes in our group.
Wow, yeah. That's good. Proud of them. Proud of your troop. Thank you for all the work you do.
Thank you, Mayor.
So the council have anything you want to say? Councilor Allen?
It's a real pleasure on my part personally, and I'm sure on my colleagues would second this, to be able to, you know, offer the support that we do for the scouts. And thank you so much for your leadership and the other parents that are part of your crew. And I'm really looking forward to seeing more activities from the scouts in the coming months and years in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Allen.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Again, thank you. It was a pleasure being able to take part in the spaghetti dinner with you all the other night. So thank you for, you know, for your invitation. Thank you for all you do for our young men and being able to teach them those skills and those traits moving forward.
Thank you. And once again, that wouldn't be possible with all of the parents and leaders behind me. They're just as much to thank for that. So thank you.
Absolutely.
So thank you very much, sir. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
So item two, Blue Mountain hike and stakeholder survey updated, presented by Ms. Tillman. Tillman? Tillman, I'm sorry. Tillman. Ms. Tillman, I'm sorry. I'm having a flashback of the lady I used to work with. Did you find some money for me?
We're still working on it. Good evening, council. Shanita Tillman, Senior Management Analyst, Public Works Department. This project is a grant-funded priority for the city of Grand Terrace. The Blue Mountain Trail is designed to expand recreational access, protect open space, and create a long-term amenity for our residents. Tonight, I'll provide you a quick update on the survey feedback perceived and where we stand with the property acquisition. The city launched the survey at the Blue Mountain Festival in May and promoted it on Facebook and our city website. In just 17 days, 133 participants completed it. Their responses centered on trail safety, access near homes, and preserving neighborhood character, showing that people are thinking not just about using the trail, but about how it fits into our community. This slide shows how participants are connected to the project area. 41% live in the nearby neighborhood, and another 25% have already used the Blue Mountain Trail. Another 19% identify as hikers or outdoor enthusiasts, and a smaller group lives adjacent to the proposed trailhead. When asked about top priorities, three themes stood out: safety, preservation, and recreation. Safety focuses on secure access points and protecting users. Preservation reflects the desire to safeguard Blue Mountain's environment. Recreation highlights... desire to safeguard Blue Mountain's environment. Recreation highlights opportunities for walking, hiking, and outdoor activities. These three areas will guide how we design and implement the project. Participants identified practical features as most important: benches and resting spots, trash and receptacle bins, and clear trail signage. Shade and natural landscaping were also highly valued. These amenities may seem simple, but they make the trail safe, comfortable, and inviting. This slide reflects what participants value most about Grand Terrace. Leading responses were our small-town feel, mountain views, and public safety. Heritage and natural features like citrus groves and the blue lupine flower were also highly recognized, linking the trail to community identity and values beyond recreation. The word cloud before you highlights recurring themes from open-ended survey comments. Trails, safety, signage, and accessibility came up most often, underscoring that participants want a project that is safe, clearly marked, and easy to use. The largest single group of participants, thirty-seven people, or twenty-eight percent, said that they are comfortable with street parking near the trailhead. Nearly half of all respondents, sixty-three people, or forty-seven percent, either preferred designated parking lot or raised concerns about the overflow into the neighborhoods. These results show that while some participants are comfortable with street parking, many would like to see a more structured parking option to support the trail. In June, the appraisal for three properties was accepted at $410,000. That appraisal will expire on September ninth, so we've already begun pursuing an updated appraisal to keep the project on track. We've also connected with the property owner and his family and are working through due diligence, including confirming easements and property details. The next steps will be to finalize the purchase agreement, open escrow, complete the necessary reviews before closing and transferring the title to the city. Once ownership is finalized, the project will be positioned for construction. And I want to thank everyone who participated in the survey, and I am available if you have any questions.
Councilman Allen?
Thank you for that report. Are any, were there any properties or parcels on the Blue Mountain that were donated, or are we purchasing all of them?
Yes, there were properties that were donated by the Friends of Blue Mountain, and we are purchasing three.
So, tell me about the properties that were donated. Have we already secured those?
Yes.
And so, there's nothing more?
There's, yes. There's nothing more to be done for the donated properties. At this point, we are just acquiring properties owned by Dennis Kidd.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have anything? So, Tillman, on securing this, say, like, we get this all done and everything's looking good. Now, I'm sure we're going to have certain hours where people can hike, because we don't want people up there twenty-four hours a day. How will we go about securing that trail head to make sure people don't just go up there twenty-four hours a day? Are we going to have a fenced location where they can't get on the path, or somewhere so they can't go around the barrier?
We have looked at ideas. There's a possibility of adding a swing gate out front, but installing the signage and informing residents that there are certain operating hours is essential, but there's nothing that's going to deter someone from walking around and still entering.
That's, you know, you're not going to fence off four hundred acres of mountain.
So we could just say danger, rabbit, coyotes, or something like that?
There's the same, the same as anything else. Outside the hours, you call law enforcement, call code enforcement, and they come out and they'll cite you or arrest you for trespassing. We deal with that.
So we'll have to do an ordinance for that then, for special fine or something?
I think that would already fall under trespassing ordinance or being in a park outside the posted hours, which are already.
On to dusk.
Yeah, so, and then, the parking area is off of observation and Van Buren, is that still looked into?
Yes, that still would be the entry point and where designated parking is recommended.
So that would be gated?
Can put, there will be a gate across the driveway. We're not going to fence the whole parking lot. And we're really dealing with cost constraints. This is, right now, we're even looking at a fairly primitive parking lot. Gravel surface, one paved for handicap parking. The grant amount that we have may not even get the trail all the way to the top. Probably be to some lookout point, we'll need additional grants or some activity to get the rest of the way up. So the focus is, and the intention is, to put as much money into trail construction as possible and not into parking lot or ancillary construction.
So, is the trail still going to be away from homes?
It's going to be as reasonably away from homes as possible. There has been discussions of adding shrubbery and/or trees to fence off in a way some of the homes. But, once again, the, there isn't a completed first draft of this project yet.
Okay.
And because it's gone through many iterations and revisions, this is a great restarting point to make sure that we are on track with what residents are looking for.
So we had a pretty positive survey then?
I would say so.
Councilman Allen?
You know, Mayor, one of the things that I think that we might run into down the road here, because Blue Mountain is not all in Grand Terrace, you know, and we all know that. Part of it's in Riverside County, part of it's in the city of Colton. There are several entities that own parts of Blue Mountain, and there are private ownership also. And I just wonder how you feel we're going to, when the, you know, the county line comes up across the top of it, and the city limits comes around over on the side of it. I mean, you know, if somebody enters Blue Mountain from Colton's side or from the Riverside County side, we can't, are you planning on restricting their movements into the mount, up the mountain? I mean, we only can control what is in our city limits unless, unless there's a district for the entire mountain. And then, all the interested parties around the mountain are parts of the district, and then they can control access. Because if you look over on the Colton side of that mountain, on Richie Canyon side, it's laced with trails from, you know, off-road vehicles and also the donkeys too. But, you know, so there's a lot of off-road vehicle traffic goes to the top of that mountain. And I think it'd be a futile effort on our part to try to control it on our own.
Conrad, do you have anything to add to that statement?
No, Councilman Allen has a point. I think at this point in the discussion, we're looking at a blank piece of land and very early in the conceptual piece of that. So we may be putting the donkey ahead of the cart on this, on those issues. That's one of the, and you're correct, that is one of the things to work towards. But right now, we're really just to confirm that there is interest, that there's positive interest, and that there's engagement on the community from this to continue to proceed, and then work through the design process and bring that as a package back. But I do, I do agree that we, if we're going to do this, we would need to work with our neighboring communities. And one of the really interesting things that nobody really speaks to or says to is that, once our trail is in, there will be a walking trail from Cabazon to Santa Ana. And our segment of Blue Mountain Trail will come as part of that Richie Canyon walking trail portion. So there's, our little piece, while not much, is a very important piece to all of the neighboring communities to the region.
Can we charge people, armed residents?
Yeah, it'll be free if you go all the way from Cabazon to Santa Ana.
So what, what's the timeline? If everything goes according to plan, when do you think we'll have boots on the ground walking that trail?
At this point, because we have to get a new appraisal, the new appraisal will take a couple weeks, and then it takes approximately three months for the Department of Grant Services to review that appraisal. And once that's accepted, I assume escrow can happen in thirty to sixty days from then. And then, then you're into the construction phase, which could be upwards of nine months.
Two years.
Two years. So, it's moving, so, which is good. So, progress is being made.
Have we looked at the California Conservation Corps and helping with the construction of that trail? Because I know they have a lot of programs.
I will look into that.
And the Boy Scouts said they'll do it too. Dirt, dirt. They just got voluntold.
We've looked at some other, some other groups. The Boy Scouts is a great one to, once we have the initial part of the construction, we certainly wouldn't send them up there with shovels and tell them to start digging. But to help, you know, work and take care of the trail. And then we're also, we've had some discussions with representatives from San Manuel as far as signage and some of the part of the trail construction and stabilizing some of the existing road that would be part of the trail. So it's not, it's not a one-person lift. This is, as Councilman Allen said, there's going to be multiple entities involved in pulling this off.
You guys have anything to add?
Sorry. Shanita, when we traveled up to Sacramento, those were the conversations that we had, as well as with Supervisor Rao regarding. So, there are community partners who do have interest in seeing that development take place and making sure that it's, you know, that it's funded and it's done well, with consideration of the community in mind. So, that was all.
Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank Conrad and Ms. Tillman for their work on this project. When this issue came up in May and I asked that the survey be conducted, I just wanted to remind everyone in our community that we've had this project that's been ongoing for a number of years, and we're at a point now where, with your leadership, Ms. Tillman, we're making progress. And that's exciting. But there are several issues that we've all heard this evening that they're still going to need to be addressed as it moves forward. Councilmember Allen brought up a few with our partnering jurisdictions. But I think what's really important is that we have a project that we can all be proud of ultimately in the end, that our residents here in Grand Terrace can utilize, but that's, that's safe and doesn't add a negative element to our neighborhoods, be it crime, trash, traffic, and those things that tend to come with unsupervised, you know, park activities. And I want to make sure we get the feedback from the neighboring homeowners and everyone in Grand Terrace, so we can ultimately have a project that we all are proud of. So, thank you, Ms. Tillman.
Thank you.
And I look forward to your next report as we move forward on this project.
Okay, so that's it. Well, thank you, Ms. Tillman, for all your hard work on this and always being motivated and keep going. So, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
All right, Item Three, New Employee Oath of Office. Gil and Jennifer. So we've got a new thing here. They had to blood-in, blood-out to get a job here.
Actually, more.
You've got to be a blood brother with Conrad and.
Actually, that's, that's a great comment. But what it really is, and I want to drive home for our employees, the council, and especially for the community, taking an oath of office is a serious matter. And it's a, those of you on the council who have done this, when you raise your hand and you say, "I do," it's something that's visceral. And it drives home what we do as public servants, why we're here, and it emphasizes that for our new employees when they come in the door, that they are public servants and what they are swearing to do. So as they take this oath, please listen to the words. This is the oath that all of us, everyone on the dais, everyone that works for the city, is beholden to and is what we hold, the standards we hold ourselves to as public servants. So, go ahead, Daisy.
Thank you, Council. First up, we have Gil Garza. So, Gil, just repeat after me. I, Gil Garza.
Hi, Gil Garza.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend.
I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And to the allegiance of the Constitution of the United States.
That I take this obligation freely.
And I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
That I will well and faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Which I'm about to enter.
Thank you.
Well, congratulations, Gil. Would you like to say some words?
Yes.
I know that's not the first time you took your oath.
No, that is the eighth time. We've counted. Thank you. Not that I've been with other cities. I re-enlisted in the Navy five times. Mayor, council, residents, business owners of Grand Terrace, thank you. I come to you with twelve years of service, public service from City of Loma Linda, now with the city of Grand Terrace. I'm happy to be here. Twenty-one years in the United States Navy, your United States Navy. What can I say? I mean, it just, it was a long road to get where I'm at now, and I, it's just great to be here. I honestly, I don't know what else to say. My voice is cracking because I'm so passionate about serving the community and being here and doing what I have to do. I mean, I'm the guy that's going to be out there saying no, telling everybody no, you know, giving out citations and, you know, enforcing. But I'm here for the community. Anybody needs help, I'm here for you. And report the concern, say something, you know, say something. You see something, say something. That's awesome. You know, it's on our website now, and it's going to work. So, if you guys have any questions for me, shoot away.
Council, you have any questions for? Go ahead, Mayor Plutin.
I just want to thank you for your service, sir, and welcome to Grand Terrace. We're excited to have you here. So, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yes, thank you for your service. I know the Navy, you know, the Marines or Department of the Navy, but we'll let you slide on this one. But is your name on the Freedom Wall?
No, it's not. No, it's not.
Well, Conrad, we've got to get his name on the Freedom Wall.
A few years back, the VFW and the American Legion came to my post, and, you know, they told us about it, presented it to us, and we were all for it, so.
Okay, well, we're going to make sure we get your name up there.
Appreciate that.
All right. Well, thank you, sir.
What Gil has been doing for the last three years or four years is he's the guy that empties the flag box in front of the sheriff's station and disposes of the flags.
Yeah, we have a, we have a flag burning ceremony quarterly at the American Legion. So I've been, every month or so, a month and a half, I empty the box, take them to Legion, and we have our ceremony there, and we properly dispose them.
Did you get that, Matt Brown?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I actually dropped a flag in their box today.
He brought it to.
But Gil, welcome to Grand Terrace, and we're happy to have you here. I also wanted to thank you for attending the Chamber of Commerce meeting and introducing yourself to the business owners and members that were in attendance there. I thought it was a very good introduction to the community. So, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, we heard you're hit the ground running. We appreciate it.
Oh, absolutely.
Just take care of these wild donkeys, though.
You know, I've been approached on the street at least a dozen times already in the last month, and a couple of the residents were not happy, had some forward-looking words for me. But I go, they're wild animals, they're protected right now, and we're doing our best to try to shoo them back up into the hills. But they are wild now. It's just like your birds and your raccoons, skunks, and possums that invaded the city. Unfortunately, we, there's no way to control them. They're protected.
Well, you could talk to Scott over there hiding. He's at Don Rao's office. They're trying to do something with the donkeys, poor guy.
We had to euthanize one a couple of weeks ago. We had our first incident. It fell ill right here in one of our parks. And so, our other code enforcement officer, she really, this was, that was her first time. So I already knew who to call, get them here, the rendering company, the veterinarian, and the people that run Donkeyland out there in Richie Canyon. So, got on it, got the donkey removed within an hour. So, it was good.
All right. We appreciate it, sir.
No problem. Thank you.
All right. Here's the next person, blood in, blood out.
We have Jennifer Vikström.
Hello.
You didn't know you were going to raise your hand to drive a bus, huh?
Oh, my goodness sakes. You know what? I didn't know I was going to have to take an oath, but I'm honored.
There you go.
Okay, so just repeat after me. Okay. I, Jennifer Vikström...
Hi, Jennifer Vikström.
...do solemnly affirm...
Do solemnly affirm...
...that I will support and defend...
That I will support and defend...
...the Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
...and the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
...to the Constitution of the United States...
To the Constitution of the United States.
...and the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely.
...without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation.
...or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully...
And that I will well and faithfully...
...discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties.
...upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, we want to hear about you and how you became a bus driver and where you came from, and you're not going to run over any donkeys, right?
Oh, heavens, no. I would probably start crying.
Yeah, I know.
I don't drive fast enough to... I can brake pretty quick. I'm really nervous, sorry.
That's all right. I'm nervous, too, all the time I go here. I don't know what I'm doing. At least you know what you're doing. You've got a license and stuff.
I've been driving for many years. I started out with DHL, and then I worked for OmniTrans, the public transportation, the forty-foot buses, for seventeen years. And then I worked for Claremont Colleges. Then they didn't want to pay me over the summer, so I looked for something else. I worked for Innovage, and then I came here, and I feel extremely blessed to be here. I'm honored to be here, and I'm excited for this career because I finally feel like I found my home job. And my parents have instilled longevity in a career, and that's what I've been looking for, and I think I've found it now. So, I'm very, very blessed and happy to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. And definitely you'll make new friends during the job you do, because the seniors really rely on that bus system and stuff. So, you did OmniTrans for seventeen years?
Yes, that's correct.
How was that job?
That was really tough, dealing with the general public. Most of them got on the bus mad at you because you have a job.
No, yeah.
But I smiled at everyone, and I acknowledged everybody, and even when they got off the bus, I tried to make everybody feel equal and, you know, good about... I was happy to give them a ride. And you know what really blessed my heart was when I would be pulling up to a stop and people would look up to see who their driver is, and they'd go, they'd recognize me, and that just warmed my heart, that there was a lot of people that looked forward to seeing me come and pick them up.
Well, that's nice.
I'll never forget that.
Well, thank you. The council have anything? Mayor Proten?
I just want to say God bless you and welcome to Grand Terrace. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I'm happy to be here. I'm very blessed to be here.
So, you and Gil, you guys could partner up, and you could drive them around in the bus and stuff and go incognito when we do code enforcement?
I can drop them off to all those angry residents. I kill it out of there.
Well, you know, he's got a job where everybody's going to, you know, if he questions him, they're going to hate him, and you just got a job where everybody's like, they're going to love you, so...
If I...
Gil, if you want to be a bus driver, you guys could switch once in a while? I don't know, the really distressed, no? All right.
I wouldn't mess with him.
I know. We had to get somebody over six foot, so when they go in there, just go in there and take care of that, so... Well, we appreciate you both. You're both welcome to the family, his family. I mean, you've seen what we did during our, you know, staff appreciation with our city manager and his new costume he's going to be wearing one day, but, you know. But we really appreciate it, and it's all fun, you know? We just come here and have a good time, you know, do your, you know, what you're supposed to do, and just, you know, welcome to Grand Terrace. It's like we always say, it's a small, it's a small city with a big heart, so...
And I love it here. This city, my brother used to live here years ago, and, you know, it being up in the mountain, it's being so small. I love the small-town feeling, and I just, I do feel like a family member with being here, so thank you very much.
All right, well, thank you. Is that it, Daisy?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Okay. We didn't have to do any public comment on this, right?
Um, yes, but there is no public comment.
Okay. All right, consent counter. If I only consent counter, items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They'll be acted upon by the city council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of the item, consent counter, and discussion. So, is there any public comment on the consent counter?
No, sir.
Okay, and we're removing item six. Does the council have any questions or make a motion for one through five and seven?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item four for discussion.
Pull item four for discussion? All right. Pull four. Anything else? So, we need a motion, one through three, five, and seven.
I'll make motion, one through three, five, and seven.
Second.
We have a motion, and second, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Councilman Brown, the question for item four?
Well, I actually don't really have a question. As we were sitting here, I noticed that one of our departing members of our historical committee walked in, and I wanted to acknowledge Toni Epps for her dedicated service on the committee, her leadership and hard work, really for all the committee members. They put on a really fantastic art show this past May that they should all be proud of. It was a fantastic event for our city, and I hope they make it bigger and better for next year. But, you know, unfortunately, Toni is stepping down for health reasons and is focused elsewhere in her life, and I just wanted to recognize her for her lasting contributions she's made in her service to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. I agree. Toni, thank you for everything you've done for our committee and stepping up for Historical Society. I think it was getting ready to be history until you stepped up, you know, brought it back. But we really appreciate all the work, and, you know, we're just blessed to have you, and you're always welcome to come back, and I know you'll get better. I have faith in God, and he'll take care of you, so thank you very much. So, item four, do you have a motion?
I'd like to move the item.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, and second, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
So, we have new historical members. Is any of them in the House right now? Oh, we don't have the new ones yet. I'm sorry. Okay. So, Daisy, item E is closed. Item S, so Daisy, item eight.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Daisy Alcacer, City Clerk. The item is Historical and Cultural Activities Committee Member Appointments. We have two applicants after the two resignations back in May. We have Hanny Bennett and Daniel Torres Flores is a typo in the staff report. I do apologize. So, the Cultural Committee is a seven-member committee appointed by the mayor, subject to city council approval. One of the members is an at-large member that resigned, so that one will need to be filled, and the other resignation is going to be council member Brown's appointee. So, at this time, I am asking that the city council appoint one at-large committee member, and the other one will be council member Brown's appointee. And I believe Daniel Torres is here, and I'm not sure about Hanny. Oh, Hanny Bennett is here as well, and they will speak on their behalf.
Okay, so you want to let them go ahead and speak?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council members, and good evening, Grand Terrace. I, yes, I am the, one of the applicants that have submitted my application to be part of the Historical and Cultural Activities Committee. And if everyone remembers who's been here, this is not the first time that I've been up on this podium seeking to serve my community. So, instead of shooting for the stars and becoming a council member, I've decided to be a little more realistic and actually serve on the committee this time. So, and because of that, it's the same old, same old. I'm passionate about this community. I was born here, raised here. Grand Terrace has been my home for most of my life, and I still seek ways to serve the city that I love and the community that has made me into the man today. And frankly, I do have kind of a quote that I feel like best describes what I want to be serving on this committee, and it's from a John Delberg Acton. History is not a burden on the memory, but an illumination on the soul. And I think that is to say that we, as a city and as a community, need to remember our past just as importantly as we need to focus on our future. And to kind of echo what you said, Mr. Mayor, whether you have lived here for your entire life, left and returned, or just moved in two days ago, we're all Grand Terrasians that have a story and a heritage to uphold.
Well, thank you, Dana, and thank you for continuing to want to serve our community and stuff. And, yeah, we don't know. We all get our start from somewhere. Mine was from Little League. I didn't think I was going to be up here, you know, coaching Little League and stuff, but you never know the path that God has for you or where you're going to go, and whatever position you're in, you do it 100%, and, you know, and you just keep moving forward. So, we really appreciate your application, so thank you very much. Council have any questions for? No? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hanny Bennett?
Good evening all. My name is Hanny Bennett. I live on 12737 Dickens Court here in Grand Terrace. My family moved here 45 years ago, and our then-three-year-old son grew up playing with the neighborhood kids in the street, riding their pit hot wheels all day. The front doors of the houses were open, and I know of one street in our neighborhood where they had a designated person called the neighborhood mother, where the kids could run to when they needed some help or some information. Unfortunately, things have changed over the time, and when I drive along the streets of Grand Terrace in my volunteering as a citizen on patrol, I don't see any children playing in the street. Once in a while, I may see a father standing at the curb watching his son riding the bicycle up and down the street in front of the house, but alone. So, I'm sure there are reasons the children don't play out anymore. One of them is they play more indoors with computer games and such, but another large extent is the parents are too concerned about letting their kids play outside, and with reason. I have, I love living in Grand Terrace, and I'd like to see the old, safe city make a comeback, where the neighbors know their neighbors, where they look out for each other, and where they come together for events such as the Blue Mountain hike. We are a multicultural community with many talents to showcase, which is evidenced in the annual art show, the various dance groups that performed so splendidly during the light of Grand Terrace. Families could get to know each other. They could get to know their neighbors while enjoying an outdoor concert or perhaps a booby in the park. I realize all this needs money, but in my four decades of living in this community, I find there's a large pool of residents and businesses who are willing to step up and, as a community, make things happen. And since I, I'm so passionate about this city, I'd like to contribute and give back what I can.
You're all over the place. I see you everywhere volunteering and doing stuff, you know?
Well, now that I retired, I have more time, too.
We really appreciate you putting your name in the hat for this, too, so... The council have any questions? Okay, well, you know, yeah, it is, you know, times have changed, you know, and we used to see kids out there playing and stuff, you know, and, yes, video games, you know, we had to take ours away from our granddaughters, and, you know, then they'd go enjoy the backyard swimming and stuff, and... But, yeah, and then just today, you know, because I walk around the hills and stuff, and there's a lot of history up in those hills, and I found an old horseshoe by Pigeon Pass. Now, there was no horse attached to it, so that's one thing. And then there was no treasure underneath the horseshoe, so I don't know, you know? But it's really old, but can you imagine if that horseshoe's got a story? Why is this horseshoe? And you could look at it, it's homemade, but, you know, how did it get here? What happened? You know, who left it? Hopefully, it's not a murder weapon, you know, so I don't know. But no, it's, history's always great when you, I always like going to cities or buildings and see the old pictures of the history, you know, what it was like, you know, how old Grand Terrace is. And then the San Bernardino County Museum, you know, seeing all that. Of course, my granddaughter's ass, the woolly mammoths back in my day, so it's like, I go, "Well, I'm not that old, but I think they were in the zoo." I have no idea, but thank you again for, you know, putting your name in the hat and applying. We really appreciate all the hard work you do for our city.
Thank you.
Okay, so what we're going to do, I'm going to let Councilmember Brown pick his appointee and pick the other one at-large. So, Councilman Brown?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd be honored to have Hanny Bennett serve as my appointee on the Historical and Activities, Cultural Activities Committee. She has stated she's got a long record of dedicated community service in many different capacities, and I'm confident she's going to be an outstanding addition to our committee, and I'm truly grateful, Ms. Bennett, for your continued commitment and willingness to serve the city of Grand Terrace.
Great, and I'll recommend Daniel for the at-large. That means you've got to listen to everybody, buddy. That's just one, but we really appreciate you guys doing this, so we have a recommendation for both. Do I have a second?
Second.
Sorry, we have a motion, a second, so... Do we have any public comment?
No, sir.
All right. I almost forgot again, the public comment thing.
I got it.
So, we have a recommendation, Hanny for Councilmember Brown, and Daniel for at-large. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, guys. Well, thank you and welcome to Historical Society and, you know, let us know what's going on. I love to hear, you know, like, reports and about history and stuff. And, of course, you have a, Jason right here, he's full of history, so... But thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, we're moving to item nine, so we're on item 10. Any benefit for Grand Terrace School Cheer Booster Club?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Christine Clayton, Finance Director. The city received a Community Benefit Fund grant application from Grand Terrace High School Cheer Booster Club in the amount of $2,000, and Richard De La Rosa is here on behalf of the organization to speak to you.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
My name is Richard De La Rosa. I served as the president of the Booster Club the last two years. This year, I stepped down to secretary. My daughter's a senior on her fourth year on the squad, and I'm proud because we started the Booster Club three years ago, and we came to find out that it takes about $25,000 to kind of run the cheer program at the high school. It's the cheerleading program for both competition season and sideline cheer, so the comp, I mean, the squad can range anywhere from 30 to 50 cheerleaders. with the community as they participate in all these events. Their next event is the Tiny Titans, where they have anywhere from 60 to 100 of the community ages four to 17 that come out and put on a halftime show at the varsity football game. And it's a big thing for them because it not just gets the girls involved, but families from Grand Terrace, Colton, Melinda, all the local communities. So it's more than just a small event. So we appreciate the city's support on this.
Great. So the Tiny Titans halftime show, when's that game?
That's this Friday.
This Friday at 7:00?
This Friday at 7:00 o'clock.
Who is Grand Terrace playing?
We're playing Palm Springs. Palm Springs.
Oh, they came out here because it's cooler?
Yeah, last year, we went out there, and one of the buses broke down on the way back.
Yeah, I went out there, Palm Springs, when my son was playing Colton. He actually broke the record. He got like a 99-yard touchdown. So the kid was trying to break the plane, and my son's middle linebacker grabbed the ball, and they took off. He's like walking out of this big old pile, then he ran. But it was hot there.
Yeah.
And their bleachers were concrete. It was even twice as hot.
Yeah, we were sweating out there last year.
Okay, well, that's great, you know. So, yeah, that'd be nice to see and stuff, so. So, yeah, love your cheerleaders, man, you know, good group of young ladies and, you know, and the parents, you know, they do so much for Grand Terrace. We really appreciate everything you do.
We appreciate your support as well.
Counsel, have any questions? Councilmember Allen?
Yeah. So, thank you so much. Pass on my thanks to all of those other parents who aren't here tonight, who've stepped up to support this. And it's a real pleasure for me personally to support your program. My question to you is, it would just be great to see a big, long line of cheerleaders in our next Blue Mountain Day Parade that we do right through the city. I'd love to, can that happen?
Absolutely, let's do it.
That was my question. Thank you, Mayor.
Absolutely, let's do it. The rest of the Booster Club would be here tonight, but they're doing choreography tonight till 9:00 o'clock, so the rest of them are out over there feeding them, and they picked me to come, right?
Well, they picked the right guy, so thanks a lot.
You drew the small straw, huh?
Yeah.
So I'm looking forward to seeing them in that parade.
Thank you, yeah, definitely. I'll coordinate that with the coach, and we'll get them out there.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so do I have any public comment?
No, sir.
Okay, so do I have a motion and a second?
I'll move.
Mayor Proten with the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion, a second, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Community Benefit Fund for the Titans Youth Football and Cheer, the little ones. All right?
Good evening, Council. Christine Clayton, Finance Director. The city received a Community Benefit Fund Application from the Grand Terrace Youth Football and Cheer Titans in the amount of $2,000. Peta Hernandez is here to speak on behalf of the organization.
Don't be scared. Come on up. Oh, maybe I should have said, sit down?
I don't know if you're going to be able to see me, but here we are. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Peta Hernandez, and...
I'm Alicia Miranda. We're Team Moms for the league.
And we're here on behalf of Junior All-American City, our Titans Football Team. We are here to explain a little bit of our program. Last year was our first year being in this program, and we realized that it takes a lot of work from our players and our parents. We wouldn't have it any other way. But as we got introduced to this program, we went from city to city. We went from Paris to Marietta, and we seen that these divisions and this program are big and proud. And as we show up as our little community that we are, that we're growing, we are loud and proud as well. But this year, we took on Team Moms so we can be out there and go out there with merch and show up to all of these cities loud and proud with our gear and our players. It took a lot of time for our players. For the month of July, our players ages five through 14 practiced five days a week, six to eight, to get ready for our season open, which is this September 6th. We are going to be part of the youth night where our players run into the football field and through the tunnel. And we realized that this is a brotherhood, that our kids are going to go from anywhere from five years old all the way to our high school. And us, as parents, grow a bond with our players as well. So we want to show with our, what we're requesting, unity for our players and their uniforms.
Great. And as Councilmember Allen, I remember last year, too, we invited the Titans to come to our parade, too, so.
Yes, exactly.
And then I talked to, hey, what, he said they're doing pitchers. I go, "Oh, you're going to change your pitcher day."
Yes, no, absolutely.
No, you can take pitchers afterwards or some other time.
Yes, because we want to be more involved in our community as well. So that's what we're trying to do this season, as it's our first year, second year as Team Moms.
Well, tell him if he doesn't show up, we're taking the $2,000 back.
Don't worry, I'll make sure he'll, we're all there.
No, I appreciate it. I remember those days during youth football and baseball. I had no life.
Yeah.
Just, you know, we were there in that field, like, yeah, two hours practice for little kids on football.
Yes.
I'm like, oh, my goodness, you know.
In the heat and the rain, but they love it.
They loved it. But no, then go all the way up to, well, my son played some college, too, but, you know, when Colton won the CIF champion, and he told his, my wife, his mom, "Is that enough football now, Mom?" You know, we're proud, but you're right about the brotherhood because the kids grew up together.
Yes.
And time they get to high school, that bond's really tight.
Yes.
And they know each other, and they know what they're doing, you know, and that's what, and your friends become family.
And that's where we're at. Yes, we do.
Yes, so, and yes, it's expensive. Everything's expensive. It's crazy, and we really appreciate it. So does the council have any questions? Statements? Do they have a motion?
Move the item.
No, second.
A motion, a second. Do we have any public comment?
No, sir.
Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, guys.
Now, remember, we'll take it back if you're not in the parade.
I will make sure we're all there, present. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. So now we're on item...
12.
12, okay. Regional boosters, go ahead.
Good evening, Council. Christine Clayton, Finance Director. The city received a Community Benefit Fund Grant Application from the Legacy Regiment Boosters in the amount of $2,000. And Erica is here on behalf of the organization to speak to you.
Hello. My name is Erica Comfort, and I am the 2025-26 Booster Board President for Grand Terrace Legacy Regiment. Thank you, council members and Mayor Hussey, for giving me the opportunity to share some of our information about GTLR. We're a small band and color guard program with over, just over 70 students for this year. Our program is primarily funded by donations from the community, parent support, fundraisers with local vendors such as Missouli's, Loud Burger. We've also done Cal Skate Nights for our students and involving the junior high and some of our other ones, the high school as well. We've been a part of the Blue Mountain Festival last year. Thank you for inviting us for the parade. We did enjoy that, and we hope to be back, hope to be invited back. And the Christmas tree lighting is always a fun event for us. Every year, we raise money to cover costs for competition fees, music, drill writing, color guard equipment, such as flags and costumes. These items are not covered by the school district, so we have to do a lot of fundraising on our own. On average, a show season will run us $25,000 to $40,000 a year, which is very small in comparison to some of the other schools in other districts. They have a much larger program and opportunities for their students. We're not there yet, but we're hoping we can rebuild. Due to staffing changes this year, we didn't know if there was going to be a marching band season for our kids. Fortunately, we do have a new director. His name is Mr. Madrigal. He stepped in and has been working with our kids since late July. This marks a new era for the regiment while holding on to our existing traditions, and we are excited to grow and try new things. Their fall show is called The Legend, sorry, excuse me, The Legend of Pandora, and it's coming together nicely with the hard work of the students and staff. The hours and dedication started in July with Band Camp and now consists of weekly after-school practices along with frequent Saturday rehearsals. Our first home game is this Friday, and the Legacy Regiment will be there to perform their new music they've been working on and possibly tease us with some of the competition music. Game time is 7:00. Hopefully, you can make it out to see what we have in store for the season. As a parent, I have been actively involved with this program for four years. I can tell you this program is incredible and makes an impact on our kids. My recent graduate from the class of 25 has chosen a career in music and will be attending CBU this fall. I've always said she found her voice and her people in the band program. My twins are juniors now, but they began in this program as eighth graders. The growth and confidence in both of them has been tremendous. One is now the head drum major, and the other is the color guard captain. I can't say enough about the impact this program has had on my kids, as well as my husband and I. So thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. I really appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you very much. And you know what? Thank you for coming out for our parade because the band, you know, what's a parade without the band? And, you know, and it's great, you know, those kids, you know, that's one of the reasons why we want to recognize these kids for all of the hard work and, you know, who doesn't want to march in their own hometown parade? And, you know, the Christmas tree lighting sermon, but the band is just as important as the team, the football team and the cheerleaders. Because they're the ones that motivate, too, man. You get that music going up there in the stands and stuff, and everybody going, you know. My son was in the band at Colton High School, but he was in the jazz band, so I don't think he could carry a bass guitar, you know, walking in the marching band. But we knew all the parents and the kids there and, you know, their love for it. And we actually had a, it was with Dr. G, so Jesse played the sax, and he actually plays over in New York now on something. So you don't know where it's going to take you. Each kid has their own talent, and each kid has their own calling. And everything's just as important as the other thing. So there's not one-sided on this, but we really appreciate this. And, you know, congratulations, and, you know, your daughter going to CBU?
Yes.
Yeah, that's a great campus and stuff. It's, and her career chose choosing that, you know, just, it's great. We do need that talent out there. I mean, and it's, I'm not talented, you know. In church, they tell me not to sing. I sung in the Marine Corps, I can't sing those songs here, so. But, you know, thank you very much for everything that you guys do. And does counsel have any questions? Do you have a motion?
Make the motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Do we have any public comment, Daisy?
No, sir.
Okay, go ahead and vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So now we are on item nine, right?
Yes. I promise this is the last one tonight.
Okay. May I? All right, who were they with? The Champions?
Academy of Champions.
Okay.
Good evening, Council. Christine Clayton, Finance Director. The city received a Community Benefit Fund Application for the Academy of Champions in the amount of $2,000. And Lori is here to speak on behalf of the organization.
Before you speak, did you bring any ribs with you from?
I know where to go get them.
Who won? I knew it. Well, those are good ribs. I'm sorry, go ahead.
They are really good ribs. I'm Lori Becker. I'm the Head of Instruction and the President of the Academy of Champions. This is Verda Asman. We co-teach together, the wonderful kids over at Cal Skate. We have a figure, a roller figure skating program where we are working with kids from age three to...
Forty-three.
Forty-three. Mostly our youth. Hearing a lot of the other people talking about the community really hits home because we feel the same things, the same family that pulls together when we're working with our skaters that come in. We've got kids that we've met at age three. We've seen them graduate from high school, go on to get married. They come back and give back into our program. So we serve a lot of the kids in the Grand Terrace community. Our program is an after-school program, but we are currently running seven days a week. So we have a place for kids to come in. It's a safe place. We're indoors. They're always guided from either two to four coaches are always in the building with them at all times. And on the surface level, yes, we're teaching roller figure skating, but the long-term goal there is we are teaching lifelong lessons to the kids. We're building confidence in them. They're learning how to set short-term goals, meet long-term goals, things like that, so it's a lot. We absolutely love working with the kids. We do take them to local competitions. Kids that do really well then go on to regional and national level competitions, as you can imagine, with skates, apparel. We do have a wonderful ballet program now that we have 30 students that are doing, mostly in part to the generosity of the council from last year's scholarship, and we're hoping to continue that ballet program as well. This year, we're very pleased that we have just returned from the national championships, and we have a team that is now preparing for the world championships in Beijing, China. So funding for us is huge. Our figure skating program is all self-funded, so any assistance that we can get from the community that helps us out is, it's a blessing to the kids and lets us serve even more skaters.
Wow, that's, that's pretty big going to China, huh?
That's, yes. That's a ways away, yeah.
So they're going to have GT represented in China? Is that what we're going to?
Yes.
All right.
That's right.
I mean, you know, yeah, when we went to see your program, it was amazing. First of all, it was amazing. I can't do anything on those skates. I would leave that walker. And if I did fall down, I'd be like that commercial. I fall down, you know, call Gary, you know, I need help up. But no, I mean, just seeing the talent from every age group and the love and the passion that they have and the love and passion that you guys have, you know, keep teaching them and stuff and passing on that, it's just, you know, like I said earlier, I mean, every kid has their own calling and stuff and their own passion. And, you know, the city wants to support that, you know, because our youth mean a lot to us in this city, you know? They're going to be up here sitting one day. And the youth, you know, and you parents taking on that. And like I said, when I was sitting there watching football and stuff, you know, and I told my wife, I go, "Why am I out here?" She goes, "Well, we have boys. If we had girls, I'd be over there doing the dancing." I go, "Okay, whatever." But no, it was great and fond memories that go by too fast, you know. But thank you very much. Mayor Proten, you have something else?
I just want to say that we, our, both of our families had the opportunity to come out and watch showcase, and it's just, the work that you are doing is just beautiful and the work that the kids are doing is just fantastic. Not only were they just welcoming, but, you know, each and every one of them came up and shared the strengths of their other team members. And so what, everyone here tonight with your competitive teams, whether it be cheer or skating, please know that you are instilling life lessons to our youth, not only to be able to work as a team, but also to be able to self-recognize their abilities and that when things get tough, to be able to push through. And I have a daughter who dances competitively, and I always say, "When things are tough, what's happening? I'm learning." Exactly. And that's what they're doing, and they have to understand that when life gets tough, it doesn't mean that things stop or that they're not good enough. They just have to understand that that's their learning moment, and they have to get past that, you know, that bump in the road, because all it is is a bump in the road. And so thank you not only to you all and what you're doing, and congratulations for your successes, but to everyone who's come out here tonight to advocate for your youth in Grand Terrace.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Councilmember Allen.
She goes, well, you, we have boys. If we had girls, I'd be over there doing the dancing. I go, okay, whatever. But no, it was great and fond memories that go by too fast, you know, and, uh, but thank you very much. Mayor Proten, you have something you want to say?
I just want to say that we, our, our, both of our families had the opportunity to come out and watch showcase and it's just, it, the work that you are doing is just beautiful and the work that the kids are doing i- is just fantastic. Not only were they just welcoming, but, you know, e- each and every one of them came up and shared the strengths of their other team members. And so what, whatever, everyone here tonight with your competitive teams, whether it be cheer or skating, um, please know that you are instilling life lessons to our youth, not only to be able to work as a team, but also to be able to self-recognize their abilities and that when things get tough, to be able to push through. And I, I have a daughter who dances competitively and I always say, when things are tough, what's happening? I'm learning exactly. A- and that's what they're doing, and they have to understand that when life gets tough, it doesn't mean that things stop or that, um, they're not good enough. They just have to understand that that's their learning moment and they have to get past that, you know, that bump in the road, because all it is is a bump in the road. And so thank you not only to you all and what you're doing and congratulations for your successes, but to everyone who's come out here tonight to advocate for your youth in Grand Terrace.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilmember Allen.
When is the competition in China?
October 17th through the 29th.
And, um, and you say you have a team that already has won the national championships?
Yes.
I think they need to be recognized. We'd really like to have that, or that team recognized. And, um, I'm sure that you can arrange that with city manager and the city clerk.
Sure.
And, um, and if that team goes to China, we'd really like to recognize them. They earned that recognition.
Yes, they have.
So Daisy, do you think that you could, and Conrad and then Mayor?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Good idea.
Yeah, thank you. That's what...
I thought maybe you were going to ask if you could go with them.
Yeah, hey, I, I would.
You had to start your own fundraiser. We don't have a budget, but...
Yeah, take, take me, but yeah, let's make sure and recognize those team members as soon, as soon as we can.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, thank you, Mayor, for letting me say that.
Yeah, no, they need to be recognized for all the hard work. Thank you, Councilmember Allen, for bringing it up. So fundraisers, do you have a fundraiser coming up?
We do, on September the 7th.
And where's it?
It will be at...
Well, of course, we scout. At what time?
Uh, it will start at 11:30 a.m.
And then what's the fundraiser? How do you do?
We're, we're selling tickets for the kids and everything that we raise 100% is going to go to help fund the two skaters and their, their journey and everything that it's going to take to get them to China.
Okay, so I could buy a couple of tickets, but I won't be there. But who do I see to buy the tickets from?
Yes. I could come and see you.
Okay.
I could bring tickets here, whatever you want.
Okay. No, I like to purchase some tickets, that way you could donate them to whoever and stuff or whatever.
Wonderful.
You could just get with Daisy and I can meet you somewhere, you know, not a dark alley or anything like that.
No.
And no skating competition, you know, I tell you. When I was on skates, they, they were, the wheels were metal, you know, so.
We could help you.
They didn't have a roller skate key, but, you know, they were still metal and...
I know, and you could take lessons to learn how to skate.
Oh, yeah. The only medal now I have is in my neck and I want to keep it like this. But, uh, no, thank you. And the fundraiser, you know, it's, so what are they going to do during the fun? Do they get to see competition or just see a show or what? How's it?
Chance and his partner will be performing a few times, and then we have the group of the rest of the skaters that are supporting them that are going to do some performing. And then we're going to have some open, social skate time so that everybody that comes out can come out on the floor and skate with us.
And a portion of the ballet will also be done.
Maybe I could give my tickets to Mr. Wilson here and he could go out there and open skate. And he could dress up like Elvis too and sing for you if you want. He does do that. I'm not lying.
We look forward to that.
Okay, well, thank you. And yeah, make sure you see us and, and, yes, like Councilmember Allen, we would like to recognize the, um, kids who, you know, got the national award, is that what it is? Or moving up?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah. And then the world. So how often do they do this world competition? Is it every year?
Every year.
Every year? Do they ever go to Australia?
Yes.
Because I want to go there and go fishing. I don't know what's coming out of my mouth. That's what shows us. I'm just up here winging it. They want to go home, but I'm going to keep them here longer. Okay, do we have a motion and a second?
I'll move the item.
I'll second it.
Okay. Do we have any public comment, Daisy?
No, sir.
All right, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, future agenda items. At this time, the City Council may propose items to discuss and/or take action at a future duly agenda. City Council meeting consensus of the majority of the quorum is required to place the item on a future agenda. Do I have any future agenda wanted requests? Well, I was thinking of one. I don't know how far we can go on it. That's why I want to bring it to council for discussion is it's so support our law enforcement, but it's going to be, um, how many times you get called out? You know, like at the Highland Apartments, residential apartment areas, um, the Wallace House, all apartments, because one of their things are they're supposed to be a safe environment living there, and even though it's a residential place, they're still a business making money, and they should also be accountable for making sure that their residents are safe and not just, um, using our precious resource on calls that they could prevent. So I would like to look into a future agenda on that to see if we could do anything as far as like penalty charges or have a meeting with them to, you know, beef up their security. But I'd just like to bring it to the council so we could, um, highlight or just, you know, throw ideas out there, so. So if I could get a motion and a second, well, I'll make the motion if I get a second, I appreciate it.
Second.
Okay, uh, city attorney, you have anything? All right, we have a motion, a second, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. Thank you, council. Uh, city communications, council communications, Councilmember Brown?
Nothing to report.
All right, Councilmember Jeff Allen?
I attended the annual JPI Board of, that's the California Joint Powers Insurance Authorities' Board of Directors meeting on July 23rd, and, uh, at that meeting, the CEO, Smith, Alex Smith, gave us a report. I'm happy to report that everything is, is going well with them financially, business-wise, and there was also an election of, of Boards of, members of the Board of Directors. President of the Board, Finley, was re-elected, as were, there were three other board members who were re-elected. And that was the extent of that meeting. And on, um, I was out of town at, during the staff appreciation, so I just wanted to say that I wished that my, I was there, my heart was there, you know, with the staff and I, I would love to have been there and let y'all know how good a job I think y'all are doing and how well-appreciated I am feel for you, but I wasn't. I was celebrating my mother's 95th birthday with her. And so, uh, I want to take this opportunity to sit, to tell the staff that. And then the other thing I attended on August 17th was the Friday Night Lights Market Event that we had, that first one, and I just think that that was fantastic. I just, my hat is off to the Chamber, Leadership and, and Christie and, and all of her gang, her crew that runs Get Loaded, who, who, uh, you know, um, heard at all that event. It was, it was great and I just hope it turns out to be an annual event for us. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
Just a couple of items, uh, Mayor. It seems to me, just in observations as we go basically west to east along Barton Road, that some of the folks that are the businesses along Barton Road on both sides of the road are not getting the message. We, that is our gateway to the city and, uh, we have a lot of culprits along there that are just not watering their grass, they're not keeping up the landscaping, they're, um, they're just not doing the job and unfortunately it reflects badly on the, on the town, on the city. So I would like it if staff could take a little more urgent, uh, business with them and if necessary, be glad to go over there and visit them, each individual business and see if we can get them to come up to staff because they're a part of this city as, as well as we are and, and there's no reason why we should look like Blythe. So that's number one. Also, uh, just a side note, uh, me and the dog went up and down the, uh, east-west streets and we are firmly convinced that the boroughs are getting through at the very top of Main Street. There is an area through that, there that doesn't have fencing and just a little bit to the E, or actually to the west of where it looks like they're getting in, which is at the very end of, uh, Main Street, there is a fair-sized lot and it is just absolutely full of, uh, let's call it debris.
Donkey apples?
Donk- yeah, donkeys, I, I, me and the dog call it donkey stuff. And so there's donkey stuff all over the place, and so that seems to be a gathering place for them. And I don't know if they're also running their cars around in circles or what the deal is, what the donkeys are doing, but I know that they're, 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 they're meeting there and making a, a fairly decent mess. Now, they were here before we were, and so that's okay. And I've really enjoyed their presence and a couple of them came up to my front yard and actually allowed me to brush their mane and, and af- after that, we'd actually had a couple of them that actually kind of made a, uh, an S through our front yard and left a few evidences of their presence, you know, in my driveway. So I know they've been through there and, and I think that's terrific. The only thing that, that concerns me is, is of course their safety and that, um, if we are going to do a park, then that is definitely a consideration that we have in relation to the boroughs because I understand that their rights might be prevalent. So it's going to be interesting how we integrate the two. Finally, I believe the mayor made a statement here about a month ago or maybe a month and a half ago, and he, he asked a question about Greens Group. Now Greens Group has had a piece of property in our city tied up next to McDonald's now for about 10 years. And I realize that they've put some money into reviews as well as some tentative designs, but after having been in the construction industry for quite a while, it's about time that they straighten out their act because at this juncture, they've got a piece of property that's a key in our city that is, has been tied up for practically nothing and it, it needs to have some replanning for it for a, uh, a fundable or a feasible type of project rather than just hanging on to it forever and, and, you know, as a freebie. So, uh, I would like to think that we, as a city council, can help participate in getting them off the dime. And that's all I have. Thank you.
We could put the donkeys in their lot.
Yeah.
I've got a donkey, he's birdseed all the time. I named him Tweety. Okay, council, uh, Mayor Proten?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I recently had the opportunity to join Assemblymember Castillo's backpack giveaway at High Grove Elementary School. That was both for the High Grove and Grand Terrace community and kudos to her for all the work that she's out there doing. Even with her broken forearm, um, she's, she's just been out there pounding the pavement and has been doing so much. And I know we've said it often that she continues to raise awareness regarding Grand Terrace and continues to be a voice, um, on our behalf. I also spoke at the, uh, the Grand Terrace Chamber of Commerce meeting regarding See Something, Say Something and provided a report regarding the public safety issues, um, within the city and provided that report. If any of you follow on social, um, you'll, you'll notice that a lot of the time the residents will post issues that are happening in and around town, whether it is someone who has trespassed onto the yard, trying to enter a house, pulling on car doors, um, whatever that may look like, it will typically get posted within, on a city group page. And there are residents at times who will approach any one of us here on the dais and ask us, why didn't you do something about it? Or why didn't you come out and handle it? One, we're not always on social media and so i- it's really important, one, that the community understands that, that we're not always on social media as well as we can't do anything if we didn't see what took place. And it's incredibly important to make sure that we are calling our public safety officers, our sheriff's department, so that way, one, they have a record of the call, um, and that it's categorized as to what's taking place. By the time it gets to any one of us here on the dais and finally gets to sheriff, those people are long gone and we continue to be victims of those situations if we're not calling the attention to the right place. And so, um, I've started a See Something, Say Something privately a- as a citizen that I put out often and that you can find those posts out on social media. And again, I provide information regarding when should you call and who should you call. Your first call should never be to us. It should never come to us. In my presentation that I gave recently with the chamber, we talked about the number of calls and the number of arrests, and so I would like to just bring those up shortly. Pardon me. Well, I grabbed that for you. July 3rd to July 18th, we had eighty, eight arrests, possession of narcotics times four, warrant arrest, driving without a license, domestic violence, DUI, and 107 traffic stops. July 18th to August 8th, we had 14 arrests, so we had an increase, um, across that time, although there were, um, five extra days in between, um, difference between those reporting periods. We had two DUIs, elderly abuse, possession of narcotics, um, three, uh, driving without a license, domestic violence under the influence of narcotics, evading a police officer, two warrant arrests, probation violation and harassment of 911, and 161 traffic stops. Our most recent report dated between August 8th and August 17th, we had five arrests, possession of narcotics, domestic violence, warrant, two warrant arrests, and possession of a concealed loaded firearm, and 36 traffic stops. So what's changed? Traffic enforcement dropped by 50% versus the last period, and that's possibly due to either fewer violations, staffing, or a change in focus. In addition, what you'll find is that in between those reports, the number of calls that are coming in from the community increased by 11%. And so we are seeing, uh, greater community engagement and responsiveness, but we need to continue and not stop there. I will defer to our lieutenant here, um, during his time with his report to be able to give us more information on that. Thank you so much for continuing to provide the data that I, that I continue to put out to the public. It's important that everyone's aware of what's happening in our community, how can we keep ourselves safe, when you need to call 911 and when you should call a non-emergency line. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Proten. I mean, you're 100% right. When do we call 911? When do we call the non-emergency? Well, if you feel like your life's in threat and you feel like there's immediate danger and somebody's going to get hurt, call 911. You know, everybody has their different talents, but you know, yeah, if you call the non-emergency number and somebody's banging on your door all the time, two nights in a row, that's not a non-emergency, that's emergency. You don't know what's going to happen. You don't know what's, there's, there's a lot of things that can happen and especially at times of night, so, you know, you always got to be vigilant. But then on the other hand, you have to be proactive, but you have to deal with common sense. And what do I mean by that? You have, also have to remember people's civil rights. You know, just because you see somebody in the store and they're walking around or you see somebody doing this and you take pictures of them and just because the way they look or color of their skin, that's, that's not a See Something, Say Something and, and the store also has to be responsible. If they have somebody in there ordering or somebody sitting around or acting up, the store should be calling, you know? And, um, but no, and stuff like that, I'm going to refer you to call 911 because, like I said, I mean, even like a, a good Samaritan over here working at the elementary school one day just doing stuff on the PTA and this one gentleman decided he wanted to harass her and stuff, thought she was stealing plastic cups. There's two sides to each story, but, you know, she was pretty upset. So, you know, come on, we're better than that Grand Terrace. We don't harass people, we don't bully people, but we be proactive on it. And something that doesn't look right usually isn't right, so that's when we call in the cavalry to take care of it. But then again, if you see something wrong and somebody needs help, you also got to have compassion. And what I mean by that, I saw a, a gentleman, elderly gentleman, now we kind of get immune to this, laying by the bus stop. So how many homeless people we see laying by the bus stop? Well, this guy was trying to get up and he was like a turtle. He couldn't get up and people were driving by and walking by him and I could see he was in distress. So, you know, I got in the other lane and people were giving me the friendly California wave because I was cutting traffic off and I didn't wave back, I just said hi. But, uh, I asked the gentleman, I go, you all right? He goes, no, I've been laying here, I can't get up. So I helped him up and asked him if he was homeless, he wasn't homeless, he was just shopping, he just got... shopping, he just got released from the hospital for congestive heart failure, and his legs were swollen up, but he couldn't really walk yet. So he was laying, he goes, "I've been laying out for twenty minutes, and nobody wanted to help me." So we also got to be aware of everything, too. You know, first thing you do, you ask them if they need help, before just placing your hands on them. You know, evaluate the situation. If, you know, if he was in medical distress, you know, we're going to call nine-one-one, of course. But his name was Nikolai, he lived in Redlands, he shops at the Walmart store there, he just got released from the hospital, and I prayed with Nikolai that day. And I seen him the other day, he was, he was looking good, at the same bus stop. So with that, this makes you aware, you know, like, hey, OmniTrans needs to put like poles there, so for handicapped people that can't get up, a lot of people can't get up when they're sitting forever. But you also have to be judgmental, like, don't put yourself in a situation if something could happen to. We're not Superman, Superwoman. I know that movie just came out, some people got super dogs and stuff, but, but we do, we have to. And then, yeah, when in doubt, see something, say something, call nine-one-one. Don't post it on there, Facebook. I read Facebook, but, you know, first thing I ask them, "Did you call the officers?" "No." Like, oh my god, you know? Or, "Yes, I did." But, non-emergency lieutenant, non-emergency phone numbers, what's the obligation for the officer to do?
Do you want the phone number, is that what you're saying?
No, if somebody calls a non-emergency number, does the officer have to go to that person's house and knock on the door, or are they just?
Yeah, absolutely, if, if a call for service is generated, yeah, and, and it pops up on their screen, yeah, they have an obligation to go there and at least respond to the scene and investigate it.
So what priority is that for a non-emergency?
I mean, it depends, I mean, that's going to be a pretty low priority. However, there are people that just, for whatever reason, won't call nine-one-one, and maybe they have that programmed in their phone for dispatch, non-emergency, whatever, and they'll call a non-emergency line, but it, it could be an emergency call as well. And something to remember, too, there's, there's always going to be a lapse, and, so if you call nine-one-one from a cell phone, typically, it doesn't go directly to the sheriff's dispatch. It's sometimes, depending on where you are, it'll go to CHP, you have to report the crime, then CHP has to report it to the sheriff's department, or if it's medical aid or fire, then they have to go from CHP to fire, so there's going to be a lapse. But if you call the non-emergency line and it's an emergency, now they have to go to that, to nine-one-one, to the sheriff, to the fire, like, there's just, just a lapse. So make sure you kind of, you have to make a judgment call of whether or not it's, it's life-threatening, it's nine-one-one, it's an emergency, just call nine-one-one.
Yeah. And you're right, because I had to call nine-one-one when that guy was beating up a lady at Stater Brothers, and I got the CHP, then I had to find out what the address was, it was, you know, but, but yeah, please, you know, do, be alert, but use common sense, and make sure, you know, it gets out there. Because last thing you want to do is put it on Facebook, like, hey, I saw this and saw that, or I saw a guy or something, and then, uh, but I didn't want to report it. You know, and don't be embarrassed, just do it. So there's my mayor's speech, but yeah, the August nights with the chamber, Elsie, good event, yes. I got there a little later, because I had to do other things, but, you know, I was waiting for it to cool down, it didn't cool down that much, but it was a great event, and looking forward to more of those events. It looked like everybody had a good time, and, and I know we already said about hot August nights, you know, with the, you know, the sheriffs, and I told Gary, get the fire department to do their little sprinkle with the fire truck, but you might take away from the sheriffs, I don't know, or you could squirt the sheriffs, I, I don't know, you know, I, you know, you could do that, too, you know, maybe you guys have a water balloon fight or something, I don't know. You can get your launchers with your little A-Rab or something. But, um, no, great event, everybody looked like they had a good time. I was really surprised, you know, by how many people were there. You might have to get a different location, I might have to have, get loaded, get a bigger building somewhere or something, I don't know, but, um, yeah. So, uh, anyway, that's all I have for my communication. Conrad?
Sure, thank you. Actually, a couple of things. First, uh, and I, I don't want to feel like I'm piling on, on the See Something, Say Something, but please, call. Call the non-emergency, we're paying for this service. The city pays for dispatch, so if we're not using it, we're paying for nothing. So use something we're paying for. If you're calling on emergency, it's an emergency, they will escalate it in the office. If it's not, if it's not that busy, or if they're too busy for what they think is important, they'll be glad to put you on hold, they've done that to me plenty of times, until they clear their emergency stuff and come back to you. You know, I had, I had somebody yesterday, where there was an ongoing incident in the, going on in the city, they emailed me, okay? You, you might as well write it on a piece of paper and put a stamp on it and mail it to me, okay? So if you want a timely response, call a non-emergency number, call the sheriffs, you can get a timely response. We can always downgrade it, we can always pass it off, we can always tell you, "Thank you very much," and we'll, we'll get, we'll get back to it. But we can't escalate it faster, and that's the fastest way, and so please, please do that. Secondly, on the donkeys, I know they're all over the place, they're coming down the warm weather for water and fresh, fresh feed, which is your yards. Please do not interact with the donkeys. They're wild animals, I know they're cute, they seem like they're really tame and nice because you're, they're getting what they want. They carry fleas, they carry ticks, they, they bite, they kick, so please treat them as wild animals. I know they're cute animals, but don't, don't interact with them. And certainly don't feed them or encourage them, because then, just like a teenager, if there's food, they're going to come back to that house. So, um, let's, let's, let's not encourage them. And finally, I did have a, a question about Griffin Park, or Griffith Park, up here, the green spot. We had some, in the hot weather here earlier in the summer, we had some real bad irrigation problems, we have those resolved. The, the turf took a real beating, so in the, the fall and spring, we will reseed that. It's not going to be the quality of the soccer fields, but it will get replanted and reseeded to kind of knock down those weeds and bring up some nice turf again, because it is, it is a beautiful piece of, of, of grass to be able, just to walk and run and engage on. And then, if we have anything from the lieutenant, please go ahead.
Yes. Uh, first thing, I just want to talk about National Night Out on August fifth, that was a really good turnout, hot, 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 hot out there. Uh, maybe next year, next time we do it, we'll put it somewhere where it's more shade and, or just, at least, maybe we'll do it a little bit later, uh, because three o'clock in the afternoon was really hot, so we'll work on that, but great.
Change the date, uh?
Change the date, yeah, December, something like that, maybe. Um, but no, I mean, honestly, just, we had, we had a great turnout, a lot of different resources were there, and the community came out in droves, and it was, it was good to kind of connect with everybody out there, and it was, it was a great event. And then, to kind of talk about what Mayor Pro Tem was talking about with the stats, it's, I, I really appreciate you bringing to light a lot of those different stats. It's interesting, you know, for a long time, I, I lived in a community that I worked in, and it's kind of one of those things, when you live in a community, and, and I've been in this position since October, and I, and I see with Grand Terrace, it's a lot like when I lived up in Lake Arrowhead and the mountain communities, that people hold on to it, you know, that this is our community, we've lived here a long time, and, and they kind of have this bubble where they think maybe, you know, oh, crime doesn't happen here, and things don't really happen here. And so it's really important a lot of times, and it's, and it's, it's a hard thing to kind of wrap your mind around sometimes, because you don't want to really know about the things that kind of happen, and unfortunately, you know, it, not that it ruins it, but like, when you, when you live there and you start hearing these things, you're like, oh, man, we're just, we're like a lot of other cities, where there is crime. Now, I will say, Grand Terrace is substantially lower than the surrounding communities. The crime that we have here, knock on wood, isn't even remotely compared to other cities. But I think it's important for the community to know the things that are occurring here. So by bringing that to light, it's important for people, because it's awareness, right? This, this past weekend, I said, I don't live in Grand Terrace, I live in a city that just borders Grand Terrace, but I spend a lot of time here, and so I do a lot of running. And so my running route comes through many, many miles in Grand Terrace. And just running around the community this past weekend, I couldn't help but notice, as I'm running through the streets, and I'm looking at cars, I'm kind of checking things out, that a lot of people in this community keep valuables. And just, said, looking into windows, just running through the neighborhoods, I've, I saw computers, I saw wallets, I saw phones, I saw money. Now, if I'm seeing it, what are other people seeing it, you know, what we're going through? And, and a lot of these calls for service that we're getting are vehicle burglaries, and people are checking door handles, or smashing windows, and people are, are, are losing valuables. I've seen, in the past couple of weeks, there's been passports stolen, briefcases, money, important financial documents, um, you know, all, all kinds of things. And I'm like, why are these inside of your car? They should be inside of your house, secured. So again, just, just putting it back out, please do not leave anything of value. If it takes a couple of extra steps to get things out of your car, you know, I have a lot of things of value in my car with work that I, you know, and I, I know partners of mine that it just, they get lazy and left things in there, and people break into their cars, and they steal their guns and whatever's going on, right? Just, just take the extra step to just get the important things out of your car. With that, I want to, I want to shed some light and on, and you may have seen it in the news here in the last couple of weeks, but Highland had an incident with an eleven-year-old girl where somebody was driving around in an unmarked ambulance. You know, and, and if you don't know about it, you know, just to kind of, and this is all in the news, but, well, basically what happened was this eleven-year-old was looking for her missing dog, and this predator was in an unmarked ambulance, and was able to persuade her, masking himself as, as an animal control officer, to get into the vehicle, where he then took her to another area and held her at gunpoint and sexually abused her, right? So she was able to escape, she was able to get home, and, and our deputies actually found the vehicle in Highland, and we took him into custody, and he's in custody now. But the important thing to remember is that, you know, we're not immune to these things. These people come from other areas, and they came into our community, and they victimized us. So, again, not to, to beat a dead donkey, but ju, make sure that you guys are, are reiterating, you're having these conversations with your kids at home, you know, that's, that's where all these things, this awareness comes from, is that, you know, as parents, just please sit your kids down and just say, hey, if something doesn't feel right, something doesn't look right, it's okay to run away, it's okay to, 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 uh, you know, to report these things, but, you know, just, just bringing that awareness, it's your community. I mean, if, if something doesn't seem right in that community, speak up, tell that person they don't belong there, you know, call it in, we're, we're here for you. Like, we, we will respond out to those calls that you guys call in, but we just have to know it's occurring. So you are the eyes and ears of those community, we can't be everywhere, but, uh, that's it, that's all I have for today.
I just, thank you. I, and again, thank you for everything that you do. And actually, before this meeting, it, it didn't warrant calling law enforcement, but I did call Jason, because I didn't feel safe putting gas, and I wasn't sure if the people who were there, they, they weren't people who looked familiar in that area. So thank, thank you to Jason today for coming over, and I, I said, you know, I'm just trying to put gas, I'm not sure, it, the people look a little, you know, saucy, so, you know, could you just make sure that I get back in my car alive, because there's no one out here? And so, you know, it, it's those things, none, none of us are immune, and sometimes there are situations, and so, um, thank you to our business owners and community members, and thank you guys again for everything you do.
Anything? Nothing to report. Uh, I will say one thing, National Night Out was amazing, so I appreciate that, Lieutenant Fries. That's all I got, Mayor. Yeah, we got to make sure you earn your pay and stuff, you know, so. Okay, we don't have no closed sessions, so we're going to go and adjourn, and Councilmember Allen, what was that person's name that we're closing the, honoring the maiden for?
Uh, Ms. Shirley Humphers.
Okay. So we're honoring her tonight, um, you know, like I said, blessings to her, family and comfort. So our next regular city council meeting will be held September ninth at six PM. The Mayor Pro Tem will be running that meeting, so you guys are lucky. Any request to have an item placed on a future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk. So thank you for, everybody for coming out tonight, and God bless.